You gave me the look I thought we were ready to go. I'll call the Crow Wing County Committee of the Hall for November 16th, 2021 to order. Our first order of business is the short-term rental update. Gary and Sam, are you presenting today?
Hey, good morning. Sam and Jake are actually going to take you through the presentation. I was just going to kick it off real quick.
Okay.
In the packet you had, they're going to run through some statistics and what have you. We have direct comments for your consumption that we compiled since the first of the year. And we did enclose a nice little flow chart just to kind of highlight the process that we did develop this year. Just thought it was kind of a, when we looked at it, geez, we do a lot with short-term rentals, on how many opportunities we try to compel somebody into compliance before we need to do potential enforcement. So with that, these two will take you through the facts.
Good morning.
All right, good morning, Sam and Jake.
Morning. So it all pretty much starts with the software. Over the past year, the software has recognized 200, or 2,544 unique advertisements. Total current advertisements are 785 in the county, and that affects 496 individual properties. So sometimes you get where a property has a main house and a guest cabin. They may have three listings, one for the guest house, one for the main cabin, one for the entire property. But total, there are 496 unique parcels with listings right now. 362 of those properties have an active license. Forty-six are located in shared capital resorts, so they do not require a license. Twenty-four are more recently identified, so they're still getting notifications from us. We send out three letters asking for compliance. Twenty-four of them are still in that notification stage. Fifteen have started the licensing process. They've applied, and we're just making sure they have all their documentation, they've paid the fee, all that good stuff is in place.
Are those fifteen included in the 24?
No, those are in addition to the 24.
Thank you.
Yep. Then there are about 44 that have gone to the attorney's office for enforcement because they have not complied after three letters. And then we've got about five that need more research from our office. Typically, the software company, they have people who look at our data that we send them, they look at the listings, they try to identify what the property is. So our staff isn't going parcel by parcel trying to say, okay, which property is this? But they can't quite find every single one. There's still five that we're trying to figure out which property the listing is actually on. And that takes some time because if you go to Airbnb and you call up 20 properties in quick succession, they kick you out and say, try again tomorrow. So we can only get so many of those done at one time, so. And just below that, we have a breakdown of the number of licenses per commissioner district, and that's from that 362 number of the properties with active licenses. We also have a breakdown of those 44 that we're trying to get in compliance with assistance from the attorney's office. Any questions on sort of the overall licensing statistics?
I'm very proud of District Three, just so you know, that we're very compliant.
Very compliant.
We follow the rules in District Three.
That's right.
Interesting. Questions?
Are you going to be covering the number of complaints or concerns we've got? Okay.
Okay.
Yes. Well, thanks, Sam, for that introduction. And Mr. Chair and Commissioners, appreciate being here this morning. I'm going to just walk through a little bit of our enforcement slash violation slash complaint process that we have. In general, there's going to be two types of violation files that are created with our short-term rental ordinance. Broadly, the first way to do that is by not getting licensed or not completing the minimum requirements of a license application. So that's what I would characterize as more of a non-complaint-based. It's not someone that's complaining. I guess you could say that the county's complaining, but it's a problem with meeting the minimum criteria for a short-term rental. So that's one area that I want to walk through. And the other area is verified complaints that are not resolved. So as we receive complaints and those are not resolved, that's going to result in an enforcement or a violation. So I'm going to walk through both of those broad types of violations. The first one I want to talk about is our complaint-based issues that we receive. So when we give customers and citizens a broad spectrum ways that they can express their concerns like we do with any of our complaints. In this case, we've got a 24-hour hotline that we post on the internet and try to provide information about to the public. The third-party company that we use, MuniRev slash LodgingRev, is the company that answers that hotline. And so the first thing we always tell our citizens to do is, please call the hotline if there's any complaints about a property. You do have in your packet a little bit about how that hotline works, so I don't want to read it word for word. But in general, when anybody calls the hotline, they're going to get an instant person at the end of the line rather than an answering machine, which is, I think, really important. They're going to take the information down to the complainant. They will then follow up by calling the emergency contact person that's on file for that short-term rental immediately. They'll let the person know that is the emergency contact, what the issue is, and it needs to be resolved. And then we always hope that that person then resolves the issue. That gets logged into our system and documented. We then get an automatic notification on the staff side of things that a complaint has been issued. The notes are taken, things like that. And then we will then, at the staff level, follow up with both the complainant and the emergency contact to make sure all the ducks are in a row, meaning, hey, we understand there was a transaction here. Did this get resolved? How did it go? And then we'll make sure we have closure to that on our end. And then we, of course, document those and go through the process.
Question for you, Jake. So I complained, I called the hotline, and they can't get ahold of the contact person for that particular property.
Right.
So then they call the sheriff's department?
So what's going to happen is if...
Let me just ask, go a little bit further.
Yep.
If it's in a city that has a short-term rental policy, they would be calling, I would assume, the police department for that city because it's not our jurisdiction. Would that be correct?
Well, Mr. Chair, they're going to call, you know, we always encourage folks to call the sheriff's department or the local police authority, but the hotline person will call the sheriff's office. And if the sheriff's office needs to relocate that through their system to the local law enforcement, that's exactly what they'll do. So it'll get to the right law enforcement person to handle that issue.
So they're aware that cities have their own potential short-term rental ordinance, correct?
Well, this, when we get a complaint, the only thing the hotline personnel is going to do is sort of follow that process.
Right.
And if it's a noise complaint after 10:00 PM, et cetera, they're going to go to the sheriff's office. The sheriff's office will then handle that as they would with any complaint, whether it's a short-term rental or not. So for example, if it's noise, it's a noise issue regardless by state law or local law. And that just gets handled by the local law enforcement to get in there, break up the noise issue, things like that.
So I'm not sure you're asking, what I'm trying to do is not have our sheriff's department responsible for something that a city has an ordinance on, where their officers take care of the problem.
Right.
If they write the ordinance, then they should be responsible for cleaning up any complaints. Gary, you had something to say?
Yeah, if I could jump in. Speaking with our sheriff, Sheriff Goddard, it doesn't matter if they have a short-term rental ordinance or not. Noise complaint is a noise complaint, should be handled by the local PD. Our sheriff's office will support them if they need it. So irregardless if they have one or not, our sheriff thinks it's a local, pleasurable issue. So, you know, I'm trying to add some clarity there with, it doesn't matter if they have an ordinance or not.
Okay.
Even if they do have an ordinance, what would really happen is, there could be, we still have an ordinance, so they would be in violation of our ordinance, and then potentially a second violation with a city ordinance. But hopefully that helps, and that's the kind of messaging that we want to continue to promote out with the cities, so that if it's 2:00 in the morning and somebody is just fed up with the neighboring short-term rental, they will get the right person out there to help them, you know, real quickly. Instead of, well, I thought the sheriff was coming. No, I thought the local PD was coming. You know, we've had some of that, been confusing, so we're trying to help educate on that topic.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Jake.
So that's hotline method of calling in a complaint is one way that we're doing things. The other way that folks can file a complaint is online. There's an online option as well. Those will come in, and those are entirely, the user or the person who's filing the complaint is the one that writes it out and independently does that. Then staff will take a look at that internally and follow up with the emergency contact and the complainant to vet those issues out. So that's a little bit about our complaint process. We do, from time to time, also get calls straight into 1010 or whatever if they're not aware of the process. But we're, we always route them to the right spots, so it's consistent moving forward. So I'll get into in a little bit about the statistics for how many complaints we received on the sheet and how that works. But I want to go into our non-complaint-based issues that we have. And we have a little bit of a flow chart that we've given everyone. And what, one of the first violations are is that we don't have any license at all. And the way we do that is, we're sending letters. So when all of the available short-term rentals are out there, and we want them to know that they need to be licensed, we'll send them letters and reminders letters. And we end up sending three of those letters spaced apart to remind them that they need to get licensed. If they don't do so, we go ahead and package that up, and we will send that to our attorney's office for civil or criminal enforcement of the ordinance. So that's one of the violations that we see. The other is, that we commonly see is our compliance inspections. We require compliance inspections for septic systems, so that's a common one that we might see. The other one is, in the wintertime, when people are needing to have a compliance inspection, we give them a license and they sign what's called a winter window agreement. And that allows them to do what they need to do to rent, but they promise, it's sort of a promissory note, that I will perform a compliance inspection by June 1st. And so if they violate that, that's another issue. And then we also have those that fail compliance inspections. It didn't pass, that's a violation. And we have those that need an upgrade of their septic system because of the minimum sizing of the septic systems. So those five categories, I would say, is the common ways we've seen, at least so far, that folks are maybe not quite meeting the intent of the ordinance. And then we have a process where we follow up on that as well. And if they don't meet those requirements, again, we hope that they're going to voluntarily comply internally. If not, we'll send those over to our attorney's office for next steps as well. All right. So getting back to a little bit of the numbers on the complaint-based side of things, we've had 36 total complaints, and those involve 17 properties. So on some of those properties, we've had some multiple complaints. Some of those complaints are related actually to a short-term rental issue, and some of those complaints are not related to a short-term rental issue. So we've had 12 complaints that we've come in that are not related. So they'll think maybe it's a short-term rental issue, but it ends up not being something that we would regulate. So we break those down in our chart here. We've had, we've had a watercraft use in the water issue. That's not something we regulate. We've had trespassing, animals being out. I think we've had a bear attack a garbage bin, things like that. And, you know, so some of those things are complaints technically, but they're not related to short-term rental. So that gives you a little bit of an idea on the 12 that aren't really related. We do, we did have 24 that were related to a short-term rental issue. We've broken those out by category as well. Illegal rental, that would be a complaint that we think somebody is renting a short-term rental and doesn't have a license, and we think you need to check up on it. And I want to pause right there and go through that process as well. When we get a complaint that somebody is not renting, or is not, excuse me, does not have a license for a perceived rental, we will check our system. We think it's a pretty powerful system, MuniRev and LodgingRev. It does a very thorough job of vetting all rentals. If it's not on our system for a rental that we can find through our system, we will send a letter to the property owner that's alleged to be renting. It's a one-way letter, and we basically say, hey, look, there's been an allegation that you've been renting, just so you know. We have rules and regulations about how to rent and how to apply for it. If you are renting, please contact us. Here's how you register. It's more of an FYI. And if we don't hear anything back, that's pretty much the end of it. Because, again, we're only able to see what our software system can find for short-term rental advertisements. There's noise complaints, there's occupancy complaints, parking complaints, and garbage and waste. And again, we break those out, all in the sheet about how those 24 came about. We don't have any complaints open at this time, meaning we've resolved all of our complaints, of the complaint-based ones. So we're happy to report that we've been able to follow up on every one of those. Getting down to our non-complaint-based ones, Sam already articulated that we had 44 rentals that don't have a license, that need one, that we've not been successful internally with reminder letters. Those are in the attorney's office right now. So that's one category that we've had. We've had 12 who failed to perform a compliance inspection in the winter window agreement, and those are over in the attorney's office. We've had three failing compliance inspection properties that need an upgrade, but their due date is 10 months. We try to be consistent with our permitting process, where you have 10 months to get the upgrade, but we've allowed them to rent in the interim. So we have three of them that are going to come due next year to make sure they get that upgrade. And then we have 19 who have been told they need septic upgrades, or they need to change how they advertise, or reduce bedrooms, et cetera, or else they're not going to be able to rent. So 19 of those, and that's a due date for 2022 as well. Lastly, we've had two appeals. I think the appeal process has gone well. At the beginning of the year, we did have five interested, we'll call them appellants, but three of them ended up either not renting anymore or deciding to take action to improve their system. The two that ended up appealing were holding tank-related. They were successful in their appeal. We took a hard look at all of the things they were doing on their property and their circumstances, and came up with, I think, a good resolution to keep those folks moving forward. So that was a lot of information on our process. Happy to take any questions about that.
Questions?
Is there any specific area that most of these requests or complaints are coming from, any particular district?
Well, yeah, I was just going to, Commissioner, I would say that your district has been particularly...
On the other column.
And in the Cross Lake area, in particular.
Okay.
Explain the septic tank violations. How do you determine they're not in compliance? Is it based on the number of bedrooms or...
Yep. So Commissioner, when we talk about, and I assume you're talking about the sizing issue, not the compliance inspection failure issue.
Right.
That's a separate issue, yep. So for the sizing, we're going to be looking at their, the number of bedrooms they have to rent, that they're offering to rent, versus the size of their septic system that's listed on all of the septic files we have internally. So that's their design, that's their install record, anything we have, we're going to scour that and look at the sizing. We're going to compare that to what they're renting. And again, heavily dependent on those bedrooms. And we'll look at two things, the tank size and the drain field size. And if they're not meeting code or the minimum requirements, they either need to reduce their advertisements to get it right, or they're going to need to upgrade.
So does the fact that we allow four per bedroom have anything to do in that determination?
It does not.
The number of bedrooms?
It's strictly bedrooms. There is an assumption on when septics go through an analysis by state code of what they're sized for, but we just look at the number of bedrooms.
And is that any different than just a regular residential home? Is it a different rule?
No.
Because it's a rental?
No, there, no, it wouldn't be. Same, same analysis.
So if I, Jake, if I have a bedroom, a large bedroom, and used to have a queen bed and, or king bed in there, so two people slept in there.
Right.
I take that out, and I put four sets of bunk beds in there, does that change the septic issue requirement?
Well, again, we would either hit, Commissioner, what I think, to answer your question, no, directly. It would not hit the septic issue because it's sized by the number of bedrooms. However, I would say that it does kick in the occupancy issue. And so when you have that many people in a bedroom, and you're only allowed a certain number of occupancy in your short-term rental, that's going to cause a problem.
Right.
So I'd like to think that we try to hit it, if you're not meeting the septic, or if you're meeting the septic, you might have an issue with the occupancy.
Get it. Okay. Good. Any other questions?
Right now, I guess.
We can move on. Gary, do you want to step up and give us a little more information?
Last thing, I just wanted to give you perspective on, this was the late of year, this was our first year. Learned, I think we've learned a lot. We've got a really good process, really going from scratch to where we're at today. We budgeted $70,000 in revenue to try to make this a successful program. To date, $107,000 is what we've collected so far in revenue. So we probably were a little conservative, but we definitely wanted to ensure that, you know, we didn't overpromise on revenue and underdeliver. So that's another positive I wanted to share with you, at least from a revenue standpoint. So I takes out of that 107, about $28,000 to run the software that we continuously refer to, that are continuously scraping the websites and matching up to the properties, just to let you know on the financial side how things are working.
Gary, in your flow chart, because we've got a couple, couple cities, I guess, currently that are not allowing short-term rentals, is there a way to flag that before we issue a license in a city that is, doesn't allow short-term rentals? How do we have, what safety check do we have that would prevent that from happening?
Currently, we don't have a safety check. We could do that, but currently, the ordinance, as written, does not have us not license a particular property because a city doesn't allow it.
But should we have that?
We tried.
Huh?
We tried. And in fact, I think it was, was it Trommel?
Ironton.
Ironton.
Was it?
Where they, the city clerk told us, we don't allow them. On further inquiry, we discover, the city clerk doesn't want them to be allowed, but there is no ordinance. Had we gone down that path with them, we would have created liability for Crow Wing County. The other thing I would suggest is, I want to try to do that if we could, just to be a good neighbor to fellow jurisdictions. They may pass something that's illegal. Do you want to defend that? And I think the cleanest thing to do here is, we have a public health ordinance that applies across the county. If they want to use land use controls to have additional controls on short-term rentals, they can, they should, they should feel free. I don't think we can enforce their ordinance.
Well, I think what I'm, because we have another city that has four rentals now, and they swear their ordinance states that they're not allowed. And I guess I'm just trying to get that upfront before we have to get into that position where we're trying to, I guess, enforce their ordinance, if you will. How do we, how do we handle those, I guess?
So currently, you know, like with the city of Cuyuna, we would still license those properties under our ordinance, as long as they meet all the criteria, they legally would receive a license from us. If a city has a more restrictive control, and in this case, a land use ordinance that would state, short-term rentals are not allowed within the city limits, it would be up to them and their city attorney to enforce their ordinance and not allow those properties to rent. If that would happen, I would, I'm making assumption here, but I would assume that if we issued a license and somebody came back to us and said, oh, well, now the city says I can't do it, so I'm not being able to rent, I don't think we'd have a problem going, oh, here's a refund for your license fee if that would happen. You know, I think that's reasonable, and I know that's...
Reasonable, but I guess I would prefer we try to avoid even issuing the license if we know we have cities or townships that they're not welcoming. I don't know. I'm just trying to prevent the, I guess, the button of heads against, you know, other jurisdictions and I...
This is, that's the horns of the dilemma we're on, is, do we have it be countywide, in which case we're going to go into cities? Or do we use our land use controls? We could have done our land use controls and not regulated short-term rentals inside cities at all. Based on what we heard at our meeting up in, was it Breezy Point? We were hearing from city officials saying, we want you to regulate the city areas as well. So then we use our public health authority, which extends inside the cities. So we could either choose to only regulate outside of cities, if we wished to, we can do that. We chose the path of, we're going to regulate everywhere. It created this issue of, if the city wants to regulate too. If the city's ordinance prohibits something, and our ordinance allows something, if we don't issue the license, we lose. If they don't issue the license, they might get sued. If they, if we don't issue a license because of their ordinance, we're going to get sued And we're trying to avoid that. Because we don't, we can't take responsibility for the ordinance they pass. So do you want the liability associated with the ordinance they pass?
Well, I guess I was trying to avoid the, you know, getting to that point and...
We did too.
Are there, how many cities have ordinances? Just two? Well, I think all cities have some type of land use ordinance. Ordinances that's prohibited?
Yeah.
I'm aware of two, which City of Cross Lake and City of Cuyuna are the two that I am aware of. City of Cross Lake's got a couple, you know, maybe 100 short-term rentals. If their ordinance specifically says they're not, I think what, when we met with them up there, that their ordinance says they're restricted in residential areas, then they should be enforcing their ordinance. My opinion is, we shouldn't be enforcing a city's ordinance. If we wanted to update the, our ordinance and says, we will not allow a license if a city has passed that, we can do that. That just gets us into a business of, we got like 25 cities in this county, and we're going to need to understand which ones allow them, which don't, when are they updating? It's possible. Do we direct anybody, if they apply for a license that are from a city, that they also need to check with the city for their regulations and ordinance? Basically, kind of a, and we can try and do a better way of doing it, but it's a standing, always check with your local municipality on any further regulations, because there's just so many different little variances. just so many different little variations, you know?
But you warn them of that?
Yeah.
That they should, okay.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Paul.
Yeah, Tim, Tim, could you explain a little further? I guess I don't, I'm not understanding you, you saying that we're going to get sued. Can you just expand on that a little bit? I guess I didn't understand, I don't understand what you're saying exactly.
So if our short-term rental ordinance allows somebody to rent, they have met all the requirements of our ordinance, then we would normally issue the permit. If the only reason we're not going to issue the permit is because the city's ordinance prohibits it, if we don't issue that license, we're going to be sued too. We don't need to be sued. If we don't enforce, in that circumstance I described, if the only reason they're not going to get a license is because of the city's ordinance, if we issue the license because it meets all the requirements of our ordinance, I don't think we get sued.
But gosh, that's just creating a friction between the cities and the county.
Yeah.
Which we have an example of that with Kuna today.
You recall, Doug, we tried with the city of Ironton to go down that path, and what I think we discovered was, there can be so much variation from city to city about what they want to regulate and what they don't want to regulate, and it becomes geometrically more complex for us to not only enforce our ordinance, but the requirements of each of the city's ordinances if they change. And we also ran into the circumstance where we were told there was an ordinance when there really wasn't an ordinance. It was wishful thinking. And those kinds of paths, going down them with the cities, can be dangerous. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, and I guess I would think these people would thank us instead of suing us for preventing a headache on their end, but of just bringing it to their attention.
Yep. I mean, another thought that you could consider is, you could say, look, if a city wants to do their own short-term rentals, do we start creating a list of areas, just like when we don't have, you know, we don't do planning and zoning for pretty much all the cities in the county plus two townships, that either you're in the short-term rental regulation business, or you're not. If you are, we'll take care of it. If you are in, we're out, and you just go ahead, and then it's kind of a clear, we're either in or we're out. Not kind of this, kind of trying to chase, you know, down, we have to do this for this city, this for this city, and that for that city. But that might help, maybe.
So we're saying that, we know we have four licenses currently in the city of Kuna, their attorney's saying that their land use ordinance allows zero, no short-term rentals. So when they come due, we're going to reissue their license and knowing that it's against the city's ordinance?
Correct.
Wow.
Think about it this way, what if that short-term rental is going to build a brand-new piece of property, right? And they're inside the city limits, and they don't meet the uniform building code. We don't have the uniform building code. They would meet all the requirements of our ordinance. If the reason we don't issue them a license is because they violated the uniform building code that we have not adopted, I think there's risk there. It's an example of, they have multiple ordinances that could impact a short-term rental. It's not just whether they regulate short-term rentals, it's whether they regulate anything that impacts a short-term rental that we're also licensing.
I just think on that one, Commissioner Hoag, the conclusion that was drawn is that by us allowing and licensing somebody, that they're legal. We're saying they're legal under our ordinance, but the city has full rights to shut them down with their own controls. Now, does that, but the argument or the discussion was, well, it gets confusing for the property owner. And I can kind of get that. However, at the same time, we would be refunding if that was the case. We're not enforcing city ordinances, that's a real slippery slope, because we just, we don't have, we don't have the tools to do that.
I'm not, I'm not suggesting we enforce a city's ordinance at all. I think in that case, they've chosen to just let the license expire, and then assuming we won't reissue a new one, but, and then the problem goes away. I, I guess what I'm trying to do is prevent that from happening, where we're just creating more friction or tension between the city and us. So I don't know what the answer is either. I just, I never expected to have areas that wouldn't allow them, to be honest. I assumed everybody'd be open to some. Now, some might want to cap it, the number of them. There again, if they say 10 is the limit, and we get 11 and 12 and 13 coming in for license, it sounds like we're going to issue it. So again, we're just-
What we can do is reach out to the cities and talk to them about this issue. I know we've had conversations with Cross Lake about this, and I think there is some consternation there. So I think, you know, your concern is accurate. I get it. It's just, I think Gary's term is the right one. It's a slippery slope. And once we step on it, it may be hard for us to get off.
Mr. Chair?
They have so many different possible requirements than us.
Commissioner Coring, I was going to come back to you to make sure that you had clarity on this issue. I'm still confused, but if you understand it, good. So go ahead.
I kind of understand. I guess I just have a statement. I continue to, you know, obviously, I'm listening to everything that's being said here, but I continue to be opposed to a short-term rental ordinance. I don't see the need for it. 17 complaints, I mean, really? I'm shocked that the city of Kuna, or not Kuna, but Ironton, not wanting any short-term rentals. I mean, these mountain bikers that come here from all over the country are the lifeblood of Crosby and Ironton, and bringing their dollars to spend there. And now you're telling them, you're in essence saying, no, we don't want you to come here? I mean, that's about the dumbest thing I've ever heard. But I just don't see the need, I don't see the need for this ordinance, and I'm going to continue to feel that way. If the board ever, I'm ready to make a motion, but I know that I don't have the votes. But if the board ever does change the makeup of the board, I certainly will be laying in wait to get rid of this ordinance, because I just don't see the need for it. And that's not really, I'm not asking a question, I'm just making a statement of letting you know where my position is. So, thank you.
Tim, if you'll correct me if I'm wrong, but Ironton is the voice of one person over there. There's no ordinance, is that correct? The clerk was the person who didn't want them?
I would be nervous about saying that. I thought, was it Ironton?
They have a moratorium, is my understanding currently. I think they're working on what they want to do long-term.
Okay, so there's a moratorium.
We certainly can reach out to them and talk about the legalities and the issues and those concerns. It's not that we're trying to spit in their eye. We're clearly not trying to spit in their eye, we're just trying to administer our own ordinance and only our own ordinance. Right, wrong, or indifferent, that's what we have been doing. And if you, you know, if you decide you want us to go a different direction, we can certainly explore what options we would have to not regulate anything if a municipality prohibits. If you're going to go down that road, then you've got to build the control into our ordinance, so that there's some legal authority for staff to act.
I don't know what the answer is, I guess, either. I just would, I would like to come up with a way that we can work, you know, side by side with our cities and our townships, that we're not creating problems, which we've now have. And if we reissue those licenses, that's going to create another storm, so I, I don't know. I understand both sides, but it seems like there would be a simple way to, to prevent these back and forth, but.
The, my little thought, if I can, you know? I was with you, Doug, we met with Kuna Neighborhood Group, I've been with Bill, we've met with the city of Cross Lake and Neighborhood Group. I've talked to a handful of folks throughout the year on different comments and complaints, and most of it, not that I understand where their mind is made up, that they just don't want any, but it all stems from, you know, a problem with, you know, somebody behaved badly, or was too noisy, or those types of things that start to build this stigma against a short-term rental. And that's where it comes back to, one of our suggestions is, whatever we can do at a remote, our 24-hour hotline, our online complaints, so we can be responsive and get to resolution with folks quicker, could help some of this. As we hopefully get better in, you know, we did have a few bumps in the road, the one in Cross Lake, we learned a lot there, and it kind of really mushroomed on us. I like to think, if that exact same thing happens again, the response time, figuring it's, we're ready to roll so much more fluidly or smoothly, that it'll put some of those concerns to rest and may, at rest, and maybe folks are a little more open to these short-term rentals. But my two cents, I wanted to throw that out there. I still just get back to, that city is assuming if we license them, they get to or they should be there, and that's, that's just inaccurate. If they have tools, want to be more restrictive, be more restrictive. This ordinance was to allow for folks to use their property more broadly, and if a city doesn't want that, then they should tighten the, you know, I shouldn't say they should, I would think they have tools to do that, is all I was going to say.
Think about, what if they want, you know, our ordinance calls for four per bedroom? They say they want no more than three. What legal authority do these guys have to enforce three?
Well, we could change our ordinance to the, I think four is too many, personally.
Agreed. What if Cross Lake has three, what if Pequot has two, what if Neswa has no more than one? These are the problems I think we would run into. And I get the issue, I hear you loud and clear, we do not want to spit in the face of our other fellow local jurisdictions. And so if you want, we'll certainly reach out to them, we can share with them what information we have, we can, if they want us to, if they want us to notify them that we've issued a license, we're happy to do that, so that they'd have good, accurate information about who's violating their ordinance. It's just the process of enforcing that requirement. Ay yi yi.
Excuse me, I know the city of Cross Lake, you know, we've encouraged them, if they want to be more restrictive, pass ordinances. You know, take it, you know, take control.
Yeah, I mean, they can be as restrictive as they want, but when you have a city that doesn't want it, period, then it just, it kind of changes the game a bit. And we have that. And we have met with, actually, Gary and I met with the mayor and city attorney, and they just have not moved from that stance, that they feel their ordinance is sufficient to tell people they're not allowed in our city. Unfortunately, in the meantime, we're back issuing licenses to them, and it's, it's just, and I'm not suggesting we go out and enforce city issues like that, but I would just like to try to prevent those cases from happening.
What if we sent an annual report to the cities and towns on the short-term rental issues?
Well, Gary's exactly right, because a lot of them don't even know this exists. And we learned that, I think, in our visit, that, but it still hasn't changed their opinion on short-term rentals, so.
And then I would also, anytime, we're happy to talk with the city officials about it, I, it is, we're not trying to be uncooperative. We're trying to avoid legal liability, that's all.
I understand, and maybe, maybe it is a meeting with all of the, like similar to Breezy, here's where we're at a year later, and what are the issues, and see how we, what we hear.
We could certainly do that, another listening session next summer or something? Next spring? Right now, our strategy is, we're trying to be very amenable with information.
Yeah, and first year, I mean, when you sum this all up, the amount of septics that have been upgraded or replaced, or ensured that they're in compliance, what a great story. We didn't do that a year ago, you know, I mean, that's protecting our natural resource. The Resolve 3624 that were noise, parking, or all that, all resolved. Not all, we learned some stuff in there, so we're going to be a lot quicker, but a tool for folks that they can call and get some resolve, where we weren't doing any of that a year ago. Some really good stuff there, and, you know, it is one year, do we, do you give it more time before, you know, changing the recipe? Just food for thought, you know?
Well, I think that list of complaints would look a lot different had we no ordinance at all. I mean, we would, but unfortunately, we don't have nothing to compare where we started to where we're at today. I, that's a very small amount of complaints, I believe, for, for the amount of short-term rentals that we have. So I, I'm okay with that, and if we have to tweak some of those a little bit, we can tweak those, but I'm just trying to avoid the licensing issue, and the, of issuing licenses to, to short-term rentals in cities that don't want them there. And I'm not, I don't have the answer, I'm just throwing it out as a, you know, something we're running into. I don't know where Ironton will end up with their ordinance, but I, it could be two cities that, that don't allow them.
I'll reach out to the city of Ironton, have a conversation with them, see what we could help them with. I think we can be helpful to them, even short of enforcement for them. But I'll reach out to them and just see if we can't help, help them in any way that we can help them.
Good.
And then I would ask you guys all to canoodle on that. Gary and I have certainly been canoodling on this very issue throughout the course of the past year, because it's a little bit of the horns of a dilemma, of enforcement versus being good neighbors. I don't know that I think we came up with a perfect answer, it's the one we came up with, because we ran into the same wall. So you're raising a good issue, it's one that we have been wrestling with.
It's all right.
We're good? Good. Thank you. Hoping we had just a couple minutes, we could give a quick update on the HHW e-waste building plans. Any possibility on that?
Is that okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Sorry.
Paul, we added, just so Commissioner Coring knows, we added a little piece for the HHW, an update on their e-waste process, I guess, or building, and then some of their balances and their accounts out there, so.
Sounds good.
Wasn't on our printed agenda, but.
No, I, hopefully this will work, just going to try to share then. Just going to throw that up there, just so you can see the solid waste fund account. So currently, we are in the works to build an HHW e-waste new building out at the landfill, kind of dubbing it a one-stop shop, where we did open up HHW five days a week now. We've never taken household hazardous waste after October, except for, you know, rare appointments. To date, just in November, about halfway through, we have 180 folks already have dropped off in November, that, would that have been thrown in the trash, or are they just waiting until next spring when we open back up? So right out the gate, the first month that we do it, it seems like we're getting some really good success on continuing to pull some of that out of the garbage stream, you know, and deal with it appropriately. But to get to that building, these are the funds, of course, we're sitting here in '21, we're going to end the year about 2.2 million in our solid waste fund. The building, early proj- really good success on continuing to pull some of that out of the garbage stream, you know, and, and deal with it appropriately. But to get to that building, these are the funds, of course, we're sitting here in '21, we're gonna end the year about 2.2 million in our solid waste fund. The building, early projections, all said and done, is $2 million, that's where we're at today. We have 300,000 of the 200, or the 2 million allocated from our tax-forfeited fund, because part of the building's gonna be for forestry and parks, a little piece of it. That leaves a 1.7 million that we need to, where is it gonna come from to build the building? So the options that we have, the first thing I wanted to talk about is the MPCA actually has a grant program called a CAP program, or a solid waste capital assistance program. What we could do there is apply for that grant, we would know basically by September of '22 if we would get the grant. It's a maximum of 2 million, is, whatever funds you get, you have to have a 50% match. So with a 1.7 remaining balance, we'd basically be asking for 850 from the state, and we would match 850, and we'd pull right out of this fund to pay for the rest of it, if we wanted to wait into 2022 to see if we get more funding. That'd be one of your options. Another option is move forward and, and put this out to, for an RFP to contractors, get real firm numbers, and build the building this spring, pull the 1.7 million right out of this fund, which would leave about, after all said and done in 2022, would be about 500,000 left in our solid waste fund. Now this gets into the debate on, well, how much fund balance should you have, and what's healthy for long-term projection? So what you'll see here, currently, we have budgeted 750,000 in there for 2022. With the 300, we're thinking, wow, a million bucks, that's gonna build a really nice building. It's basically, early projections is probably more than that, there is about a 20% contingency in there also. What we're thinking is if you go ahead and spend the money out of this fund, what we're gonna need to do, or you have options, they're not all positive, but I want to throw them out there, because you guys need all your options. One, the solid waste assessment's 15 bucks, you can go $5, $10, but if you did a $10 raise on a 15, is, every $5 is 200 grand into that fund roughly annually. So if you did 10, 10 bucks, that's 400,000 more of influx of revenues into that stream, and, man, that, that fund balance would build right back up real quick if you wanted to do that. If you don't do that, the other thing we continue to look at is fees, trying to at least break even on our recycling, on our mattresses, e-wastes, tires, all of that stuff that we try to keep out of the landfill. And there's some salaries and stuff too, that we're gonna kind of continue to look at to not pull out of this fund, put somewhere else, so we can shore this up. Option three would be to look at Fund 43, or our capital improvement, you know, plan, and put some of that money in there somewhere. Trust me, I've been involved for years trying to get that fund balance up, so I'm not saying that that's a popular option, but it's your option C. So those would be kind of your three options if we want to continue to move ahead. I didn't get any photos for you today, but the dirt work out there has pretty much been done as far as, we needed to widen this space, it was getting really choked with some of the semis coming in. And the area where we're gonna build a loading dock, which is really gonna be an improvement for how we do our business out there, is all done. In the spring, we'll go ahead and pour the dock and get that all completed. So that, that piece of it will be out of the way, and then we'd just be focusing on the building, depending on how you guys wanted to proceed. So that was an update with a little bit of a, kind of an ask in there, was, kind of get a, where is everybody at with what they want to see?
Now, real quickly, I'm gonna ask Commissioner Hoag and Commissioner Coring to, since they sit on that solid waste committee out there, if they would have any input regarding this.
Well, if, if I understand, if we start construction on a building, that, that then voids out the grant, MPCA, was it?
Yeah, that's the sad thing.
We, we would be forced to wait till, and gamble that we would get money, but put the project out to 2022, or later.
We would start at probably fall of '22, the actual building probably would go up spring of '23, you know, early summer of '23, somewhere in there, if we waited on the cap grant.
So, I mean, personally, I'd like to see the, you know, the thing sooner than later, because I think it's going to enhance our programs, recycling to be probably the biggest, and just help streamline things at the landfill. So I guess, in my mind, the question's which option, A, B, or C, that we, that we would look at. I, I like your idea of, of maybe using the, the funds there, and maybe an increase in the solid waste fee, which hasn't been increased for how many years?
Oh, I think it was 90, 98 or something, I, I have to go look, but it was, it's been a long time.
I think the last time we touched it, we reduced it.
Yeah, it went from 20 to 15, that's correct.
If we, if we looked, we should be able to flowchart that, to say if we increased it, say, five bucks, we'd be back up to our, our fund balance, kind of the, or by $10, you know, obviously, it would just be half the time, but, and see what that looks like and, as far, before we make a.
Yeah, well, really, and this is real quick, but the 2022 number there, you take a, you know, that would actually be about 500,000 that would roll over into '23. But if you had a $5 build, that's another 200,000, so instead of 500, you'd have 700,000. And then when you look at a projection, you were probably gonna build 150, 170,000 a year over year, until you get to what you feel a decent fund balance would be, right now, we're at 2.1. Typical expenses, about a million dollars a year, if you see the expense line, you know, rule of thumb, not the accountant here, but you want 40 to, you know, 50% of your expenses kind of sitting in a fund, rule of thumb usually going into another year. So you'd want, you know, 6, 7, 800,000 of rolling over fund balance in this account, with probably healthy, I like a million from this standpoint. Recycling can be so volatile, it was just a couple years ago, we went from 18,000 to 75,000 just on Nisswa site. So that can really have some dramatic fluctuations, so I do like to have a, you know, it seems like to me to be prudent to have a little bit more, way to absorb some of that, because, you know, we, we can't just go out and get the money right away, you're trying to be planful, but at the same time, I think there's, that's what would happen if you did $5, if you did $10, the, the build would be, you know, probably paid for itself in four or five years, that's 400,000 a year, you know, so.
What is a comfortable fund balance number for that account, do we know?
Uh, we, we reached out to finance, worked with Jessica, we think it's right about a million bucks, we should have about a million dollars in fund balance.
For sure, we're a little, little heavy now.
Think about, you, you have a, another option is, you could certainly bond for it. We don't typically like to, but that is an option as well. You can also do a combination of strategies, B, C, and the D that I just mentioned.
I didn't think of that.
The only one that delays you is option A, to apply for the state grant. And that's kind of the direction we need from you, is, do you want this sooner, or do you want this, can, or do you want to be more patient and try to get some state funds? That, I think, is really the operative question for us today is.
The grant, there was still a, you know, you don't know if you're gonna get it or not, so you're kind of rolling the dice a bit there, so I don't know if Paul has anything to add. Commissioner Coring?
Well, well, that was, that was my question, is, you know, you can fill out an application and send it in for a, a grant application, that doesn't necessarily mean that's a given, does it, that we're gonna get the grant?
No, it is a competitive process, so there'll be other counties or facilities, you know, it's like every pool of money, everybody's going after them, and we would be one application out of probably 15 trying to get some of the money.
Yep. I don't, I, you know, as you know, as you all know, I don't like raising taxes, I don't like raising fees, I don't like raising anything. And with the way the economy's going now with, I mean, you ever go grocery shopping and buy any meat, or, or look at the price of things going up, you know, and, and the, the garbage, the, the garbage haulers, I don't know if you've noticed, that as the, the diesel fuel goes up, all of a sudden, your, your garbage is going up. Myrda, you know, my, was my dad's lady friend, she just, she's got a garbage can, it's, it's $30 a month, and she might put in one or two bags a week in there, I mean, it's, it's virtually nothing, you know, and, and that's, that's a lot of, of money. So I, I guess I'm just concerned about raising things up. I do want this facility, I think this facility was, is gonna be really helpful for the citizens of Crow Wing County to, well, Gary just reported there that, you know, if we can keep these chemicals from going in our landfill, that's gonna be good for future generations, so I, I, Tim, I, could you just expand a little bit on bonding? I mean, I know money is super cheap, I mean, could, could we get a, like a short-term type thing and just make payments, you know, until it's paid for, rather than raising the solid waste fee? And another thing with the solid waste fee is, okay, so the solid waste fee is, is on people that own property. It's not on rental property, anybody that's renting, they're not, they're not getting a solid waste fee, it's just the people that own property. And I don't know, I guess if you want to be fair about it, I don't know that that's the fairest way to tax somebody, so.
Mr. Chair, you could use bonding to maintain your fund balance where you need it to be, but then you also have to plan for the debt service. And so there really is no free lunch, you can use bonding to maintain fund balance while you are paying for it. So you can do that over a 30-year lifecycle, you can do that over a 15-year lifecycle, you can do it over a five-year lifecycle. What Gary is, is suggesting is, if you increased the solid waste fee by 10 bucks and 400,000 and a four-year payback, then you should be prepared to have it go back down when you're done paying the building. If you're looking for a longer-term strategy, the $5 might make sense, it's a longer payback, but you could use bonding to maintain your fund balance for five of those years, and then it takes care of itself for the long term. There's really a variety of strategies to fund this, and we can bring you back a variety of, you know, here's funding options. It really boils down to, do you, I think there will be a need for some additional revenue here. And one way to avoid that would be the state grant. It's a long shot, I think, MPCA does not love landfills. Have they awarded any of these cap funding to any other landfill?
I believe Todd County got a new transfer station just last, last year.
That's going to an incinerator, right?
This isn't necessarily for the landfill, this is to keep stuff out of the landfill, so this is more favorable than, you know, trying to get real landfill money.
It, it, it's a long shot, and it's a possibility.
Could you factor in some, some of capital improvements as well, so we could have maybe two or three funding sources for that? I'd, I imagine that could, that might move it out a little bit too, because we'd be looking at 2023.
Possibly. You know, you advance funds to.
Or 2022 capital.
You can advance funds as long as you know that they're going to be replaced.
Right.
That's one of the reasons you hold fund balance, is so that you can be flexible. And unlike the grant, you can break ground and then do your financing if you want.
Right, right. The, the grant, as soon as you build anything, they won't, they won't give you any money.
How about if we bring you back some financing options, that takes a look at, how would we pay for this thing over the course of time, and what would be required to do it and maintain decent fund balances? That way, we don't have to answer the question today, but we can at least get you better information to make a more informed decision.
I think that would be the best route to go at this point, that's what I'm seeing from the other commissioners, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Could I ask another question? Gary, the, the $10 coupons that are sent out, those only go to the people that pay the solid waste fee, correct?
Correct, just property owners in Crow Wing, yep.
Yep. How much, how many people take advantage of that $10? And how much does that add up, up to, I mean, is like, is it 400, or is it, I should say, is it like 100,000? How many people cash in the, the $10 coupon?
I, we have that statistic, I wanna, I'll, I'll bring that with this, I want to say that costing is about 60,000 annually for a coupon, so, you know, you take 60,000 divided by 10 is.
That would, that would be an option, you know, if that's 60,000, I think drop the coupon, and then, you know, hang on to that money to put into this facility, for one thing.
You, you could, there's, it gets a little more complex. Part of our SCORE grant that we get, 189,000, is we have to have different ways to promote recycling, and that's the way that we do it. We send out that flyer that has all of this messaging on it about recycling, and then what we've done here, of course, is upped our game by really encouraging people to come out to the landfill and dispose of stuff with the $10 coupon. So I still think we could get rid of the $10 coupon, we're still gonna have to do some kind of messaging, so we satisfy the SCORE grant requirements.
Somebody's got their hand raised to Mr. Chair.
Jessica?
Oh, she probably has the data.
Hi, yeah, I don't have the exact numbers, but it was about $4,000 worth of coupons redeemed so far this year, that's as of the end of September. And then it costs us about 20,000 to 25,000, depending on the number of mailings, to send out that coupon. But like Gary said, it has a lot of other information, we could just take the coupon part off of it, but we would still want to send something out with all that info on it.
So only $4,000 of the coupons were redeemed? I mean, that's, that's, I, I'm shocked by that, I thought it would be way more. Wow, okay.
We'll bring you some options.
Yeah.
Okay.
And so Gary.
I think I need, I need to have some more.
December committee?
Yeah, we'll bring it back to December, if that's okay.
Yep. Commissioner Coring, go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say the same thing, I need to have some more options, I, I, I just don't feel like I can, I can make a decision right at this moment, I gotta, I gotta think about it some more.
I think we're all in that boat.
Yep.
Sounds like, sounds like there's numerous things that can be brought together to give us any number of outcomes, so we'll look forward to that analysis.
Great, that was the main thing, is to get an update and get kind of the discussion going, I guess.
I thought it was gonna be about a three-minute update, you know.
Sorry.
Open forum is three minutes.
I've been in their shoes before on the other side, waiting, you know.
All right, thank you, Gary. With that, we'll move on to item number two, which is the Mississippi River Brainerd One Watershed One Plan, Jake and Melissa, from SWCD. Melissa, do you want to join Jake up here in the, at the table?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Well, we're happy to be here with Melissa, and there are many other partners that are potentially gonna be a part of this topic as we move forward. One of the benefits of the One Watershed One planning process, of course, is working with our partners within the county, outside the county, and among agencies for one common goal, and that's to improve water quality and the lives of the people in this county and anyone in the watershed. So we're excited to talk about this subject. Just stepping back a little bit, it's, it's been almost 10 years since we've had the current water plan with Crow Wing County approved by this board, and that was a plan for the entire county. It's still into, in effect right now. Since that through right now in the state. As you know, uh, in early two thousand twenty, the Pine River One Watershed One Plan was, uh, adopted by this board, and, and by all accounts, uh, it's been a successful collaboration, and with some good stories and successes that have come from that plan. Uh, we're, you know, over a year and a half into it, and, uh, still going strong on that particular one in northern Crow Wing County. The vision for One Watershed One Plan is to align local water planning on major watershed bound- boundaries towards prioritized, targeted, and measurable implementation of those plans. And so, uh, the state and the county certainly thinks this is the next logical step in water planning. In May of this past year, uh, the county board did approve a resolution to support a grant that Crow Wing Soil and Water applied for through the state of Minnesota to, uh, to get where we are today. I'm, I'm pleased to announce that that grant was awarded to Crow Wing Soil and Water, and so here we are today to talk about the start of a planning process to develop that plan. And so we have before you a memorandum of agreement, um, that's in your packet, uh, for you to consider, ask questions, comment on some more background. Uh, this plan articulates that Crow Wing County is going to be the lead on the public notice requirements in support of that plan, and Crow Wing, uh, SWCD is going to handle the policy and advisory committee coordination. There are other counties and soil and water conservation districts involved. They will have many other roles, and I'm not, I'm not gonna go through that at this point. I wanted to keep it centric to the county. We've had our county attorney review this draft MOA, and they've supported its current language, including all the other county attorneys that have, uh, reviewed this. If you find this memorandum of agreement acceptable, uh, we'd like to present this for your formal consideration, um, at an upcoming board meeting. Uh, it could be as soon as, as, as the next one or early December. A little bit more background, the watershed is in thirty-four percent, I'm sorry, Crow Wing County contains thirty-four percent of the watershed. It's over three hundred and sixty thousand acres, and it's, it includes more than fifty percent of the county. So it's a major, uh, part of, of the county's land base. There are five watersheds in Crow Wing County. Again, the Pine was one of them. This is another one, and then there's three others that we'll, we'll need to go through. Seventy-five percent of that watershed is in private ownership. Uh, there's also Todd, Morrison, Aiken, and their respective soil and water conservation districts. I know there's a map that we've included in the packet as well, and you can kinda see where that lays out. We're going to eventually have a policy committee that'll be formed as part of this, uh, and that policy committee includes a representative of one of the county boards from each of the respective counties, as well as, uh, one representative from the soil and water conservation districts. There's also going to be a, I think it's an advisory committee, and, and the advisory committee would serve to, uh, make rec- uh, would serve to help form the plan with, along with staff coordination and research, and those plans or those concepts would be presented to the policy committee. The policy committee would make recommendations on the plan itself, and then, um, as usual, the, the, the concept that's worked well for us is the county boards themselves and the soil and water conservation districts do retain final authority in making decisions on what goes into those plans and what gets implemented. So that's the kind of concept we're looking at. Eventually, um, uh, in January, I believe, all the appointments are made by, uh, by the chair, um, so we, we would ask, in addition to considering this memorandum of agreement, uh, that, I, I did bring a, a map that was created recently, and I can hand that out, which basically shows how much of this watershed is in each of the commissioners' district. I will tell you that, uh, just looking at this, uh, District Five and District One do hold most of the areas, so I'll hand that out real quick. Again, uh, there's a lot I can go through, uh, regarding the One Watershed One Plan concept, but in general, uh, we would be looking for some comments or feedback on this MOA, and then if everything goes well and it, it gets approved by this board, we would be looking at, uh, about an eighteen-month planning process for this watershed plan, and then get that adopted. So, um, there's a long journey ahead of us, but I, I think we'll be very successful with the partners we have. With that, I'll take any questions.
One quick question, and is for either one of you. How does the Mississippi Headwaters Board play into the planning process of this watershed?
I can let Melissa answer that.
Um, Mr. Chair and members, uh, great question. So, uh, the Mississippi Headwaters Board, again, is a joint powers, um, between, uh, is it eight counties, I believe, of the first three hundred miles. Um, we'll probably have Tim participate as a part of the advisory committee. He's very interested in, uh, these planning efforts. Um, and then also, we'll be using whatever, uh, initial data that they've already collected. So they've been doing a lot of different mapping along the river as a part of their protection model, and we'll definitely try to incorporate that, those information into the plan, um, and probably reference it as well, the, some of the work that they've done.
Okay. Other questions? Commissioner Coring?
No, Mr. Chairman, no question, there's no questions or comments. Thank you.
Seems like a, I would assume then, from the fact that there's no comments, that this has support to move forward?
For sure.
Looks good, Commissioner Coring.
And, and then, Mr. Chair, I was thinking, if there's not a lot of feedback and things look good, would it be appropriate to put this on consent for the, a future, rather than a regular agenda?
Is the agreement the same as it was for Pine River?
Yes, there might have been a few minor tweaks, but yes.
Can you review those with me, and then I'll answer your question?
Absolutely.
It don't depend on how substantive those changes are.
Appreciate that, so.
Thank you very much.
We'll defer to Administrator Hul to determine which part of the agenda goes on. Anything else on the One Watershed?
I do have to say, uh, with, working with the, the Pine River watershed, uh, it's in a very interesting process. Uh, I think that, again, Jake and Melissa have done a, do an excellent job of, of working on that and, and representing their county.
Very good.
Um, Mr. Chair, I just had one other comment, that both the city of Baxter and city of Brainerd do support this. They signed resolutions when the county did. Um, and so that's one unique thing about this watershed, I would just say, is that we have a lot of small cities. I know, uh, Commissioner Hoag, you, you know, we have all those cities over in that area. Um, so we definitely want to engage the cities in this process as well, um, and realize that they're an important, uh, partner through that process.
Well, thank you for bringing that up. I hadn't thought about that question, but having the support of these communities that border the river, it's important to have their support in this process too, so, thank you. Anything else?
I think that's it.
Alright. Melissa, you'll meet with Tim and talk about the changes, changes, so we know we aren't getting in deep water. Alright, next, we have Mayor Lubke, but I'm gonna ask your patience. I'd like to take a five-minute recess for obvious reasons. Thank you. Alright, I'll call the committee back to session. Appreciate your patience, Mayor Lubke. And on this one, we have you up to testify first. So if you wanna come up here and sit at the table, you're welcome to do that, or you can stand there at that mic. It's up to you.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to thank you for hearing us today or letting us come and speak to you today, and appreciate that. And, uh, I'm here, uh, today with Krista Okerman, who's also our zoning, uh, administrator for the city of Jenkins, and we have on one forty-five, which I don't know if we have a map. Oh, good, we got the map up there. Um, and I, what I'm gonna do is just, uh, the council, we brought this up to council because of a access issue on, on one forty-five, and the council asked, uh, Krista and I to come here and speak to the, to the county board at the meeting of the whole. So I would like Krista maybe to go through what, what the process is up until then, and we'll see where we're at from there.
Good morning, Commissioners, Mr. Hul. Um, the, just a little background, is we received an application for a conditional use permit for a business to go in, um, located in that parcel that we're looking at here. Um, and so we did our process of, uh, posting notifications, um, held a public hearing on the conditional use permit. Um, and as part of that process, because it was located off of County Road one forty-five, I sent it to the county for a comment and review. Um, at the time of the public hearing, I didn't hear anything back from the county, um, regarding that, because it did show access off of one forty-five. So it went to the planning commission, and, uh, one of the conditions of, it was approved, one of the conditions of approval was for access on one forty-five, because that's what the site plan showed for him to have that. Um, so it went forward to the council with a recommendation of approval with that as one of the conditions, and the council also approved that. Um, uh, and so it wasn't until, I guess after, that we found out that the, um, county was not in support of the access off of one forty-five. So, uh, I guess that's why we're here today, because of the access issue.
Okay. Having said that, then I'm gonna let the county engineer speak to this issue, if you don't mind, Jim.
Sure, thank you. Mr. Chair and Commissioners, um, what Krista, uh, said was true, and our comments that were forwarded to the Jenkins Planning and Zoning were a reflection of the county policies that we do have. Um, I forward those to you, and I do have them here, but in a nutshell, what it says is that the access for parcels like this that have access to what we call a minor road, and what I mean minor is less traffic, um, Pulek Street, and in this case, a, a frontage road, is that the requirement for, uh, access is they come off the minor roadway, and that's really for, uh, safety, and less access equals higher safety, just in a nutshell. And so that ordinance was adopted by you, or this board, in two thousand nineteen, and those comments that we, excuse me, that we forwarded to the city, uh, do reflect that. I'm not sure about the timing of it. I'd have to review the timing of our comments. Um, I think we first heard about it October, or, excuse me, September fourteenth, and I think we finally had, we had submitted comments on the fifth of October, so just a few weeks later.
What are the traffic counts on the frontage road? On, I don't know how to pronounce that, Pulek Street and one forty-five?
I, I, um, I do not have access. I don't have the answer for you today, but I, and I would not have access to either Pulek Street or, uh, the frontage road.
Do we think they're higher than County Road one forty-five?
No, I don't.
Does anybody think they're higher than County Road one forty-five? Why would we put access onto the highest volume road of the three choices?
I didn't hear you.
The greater risk of an accident, and you know we built County Road one forty-five in part because we wanted to improve the safety in that corridor. Why would we put the access onto the highest volume road when there are two alternatives?
Um, and I, I don't have the rest of the, I don't have, see the site plan up-
We do have that. We do have that. Therese, can you flip?
Yeah, you could throw the site plan up there. Um, again, in talking to the, um, the property owner that's looking at, at putting that business in there, or is putting that business in there on that property, the business is, is more of a warehouse-type storage of, uh, of landscaping material, meaning brick and, and block, but he's also looking at, uh, bringing also his spray business also in there. The, and keeping the rest of the front part of that property up there pretty much for a, um, a, a highway-visible business that isn't in there at this time. But right now, he's looking at for his traffic to come in and go out instead of coming in with a, like a forty-foot trailer, coming in and trying to turn around in that property, and then coming right back out the same access that he has right there, keeping his front access and everything up there for other, maybe retail-type businesses. So, the other thing is, is in the city of Jenkins, if you look at a larger picture of that area, the city of Jenkins, when, when all the road projects started, and we started working with one forty-five, in our comp plan and stuff, we show that, that whole area of the city of Jenkins is, is pretty much where we're brewing, bringing our commercial district down to, because of the, because of the fact that it is a, um, you know, close to the actual light. That area's already done. There's nothing done north of that, you know, as far as Highway three seventy-one project. So everything in that area is where we wanna kinda keep our commercial. If you look at those lots on the, on the other side of the road, every one of those lots is gonna have to come to the, the county board at this time to get access for all those other lots on that side that are also listed commercial, if, if the county keeps that road and has that road. Um, that was kind of our main plan, and, and the reason the council said, the council and the planning commission both approved this, this, uh, CUP with that access, and that's how we put it. Um, they wanted me to come in and address that. And, and if you go to the history of this road, way back, this road was actually just a division road between Jenkins Township and Jenkins City. Um, it wasn't until somewhere in the nineties, according to the people I've talked to, that there was a swap made from another road in Jenkins and swapped that road for this one, where the county took that one over and the city took over what we call Lilac and Veterans, which goes by the VFW and stuff like that. So it's always been a division road between a township and a, and the city, and in the, in the history of it, all the, all the property on the township side, most of the township property annexed into the city for development and became commercial. So we see in the long vision of it that this is gonna be more suburban in character with commercial that's gonna be happening in that area. And for us, when we're sitting there trying to help people coming into our city to open a business, which also helps everybody, we wanna make sure we can be an advocate for them. When we don't have, we come to you for the road issue and, and, and brought up properly and everything, we have a heck of a time figuring out what to do there. And we've toyed with the idea of even back in conversation years ago, we talked about maybe, is there a way that the city could maybe take over one forty-five and become our road? And at that time, that was just talk. It was nothing ever formally put in, in the process on that, because we see that as being a very main article, or, um, arterial part of our development for our city. So there's, that's, that's kinda why we're still asking for this, this on there. For, in order to make a turnaround in that property and come back out there, we've pretty much eliminated a fair amount of his property to be developed, and it's pretty much only for a highway, or for a truck traffic coming in and going out, delivery track that can pick up traffic. It's not really as a retail entrance where there's gonna be a lot of people coming and going on that side. Most of that would be on the high, on the other side using Pulek and Gateway.
What would prevent him from, instead of coming down and going to the right, coming down and going to the left?
Uh, meaning, meaning any backup on the highway?
Frontage road instead of one forty-five.
I don't know.
I think that's a, that's a good question, though, Mayor, because, you know, we know that there's gonna be accesses coming off that east side of one forty-five. We know that'll happen. They're landlocked. They only have one way out. Why, in my mind, if we built one forty-five with your argument at the time, to be a safer route for pedestrians and recreational users, but also for the highway traffic, the drive lanes and that, why would we bring another entry onto that one when there are other, plenty of opportunities? Because what we're, what I'm seeing up here, and I'll just be real blunt with you-
No, that's why we're here.
-is really a napkin approach to what this gentleman wants to do, or this person, I don't know if it's a man, this person wants to do with this project, and to Administrator Hul's point, it can come off the service drive- And to Administrator Hool's point, it can come off the service drive and still go onto Pullock, he gets the same sort of horseshoe approach to do what he wants to do, the concern that he has for his larger trailers and that. So I guess, you know, I'll just tell you bluntly, for me, I'm not in favor of this. I think that he could do a better job of laying out his property.
Okay.
And I think it would be incumbent upon him to do that, and also know kind of what the challenges are when you have Mindout on one side and you have the county on the other side, that there are rules that go with each of those ruling bodies that they should, he should be aware of. And I, you know, I applaud you for coming in here, but I think that-
Oh, yeah, oh, no, that's, I was, I was asked by the council to do that.
Just feels like the due diligence wasn't done in terms of developing that property. Commissioner Coring, did you have something you were trying to say?
Yes, yes, I'm, I would like to just give you my opinion, if anybody wants to hear it, but, you know, this board, this county board, we're the governing body for the county, and we have lots of policies as it pertains to everything. And here now, we have a case where we have a policy on this, and our great county engineer, who is trying to adhere to the governing body, us, and he's trying to adhere to what our policy is, and that's what our, our policy is. And so I just want to say that I, I'm with you, Mr. Chairman, I do not favor that, I do not favor permitting that access onto 145. I support the county engineer on this, and I don't know why we're, I guess I don't even know why we're even discussing this. This is our policy, it should, the, the access should be on the, the road that has the least amount of traffic. I mean, go up and down 371 in Baxter, that's why they have frontage roads, because they don't want every damn business going onto a busy road. So enough said, I guess that's all I've got to say on that.
Mr. Chair, can I interject? And I think, I want to talk about the timing, because I think that that's probably what you're thinking right now, is that, why didn't you get us the comments in time? And that's really, I apologize that we did not do that. It was very clear to have it by a certain time, to try to get prior to your meeting. That's why you're here, because your city acted, in the absence of our comments, you acted, and now we did provide you comments, and it's contrary to what you acted on. And so had we had these comments, we might not even be here today. So I want to apologize for, to you, and, but, we still have to backtrack and make sure that our policy, just, we did, we did make a mistake, but it doesn't mean that we should not try to uphold the policy, because the policy's in place for a lot of good reasons. And so I was, I did not understand the timeline as well as I do right now. And that is playing in, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, and I just want to acknowledge that.
And further, Mr. Mayor, I mean, the idea to develop that eastern part of 145 is clearly a good idea, and we would like to be as supportive as we can. You may consider that a frontage road that ties into Pullock Street on the east side of 145 would be a good planning maneuver for the long-term development of that acreage into commercial, so that you could create the one funnel spot that it comes out, that whole area, one access. If you can plan for that long term, we can probably help you with the planning of those things. But I think long term, that's the solution for the development and to have safe access.
And, and you know, my, my duty here is, is as my counsel, to be here to speak to this.
Yes.
And so that's exactly why I'm here. And the other thing I did wanted to definitely talk about is, is that longer-range plan for that area of the city of Jenkins. And as that time goes on, is it, I liken it to 210 leaving Baxter, which used to be all housing, which is now morphed over time to be commercial. We pretty much see that happening down there, and at this time, that is the place to do it, because of what we have done in the past with 16, and with the frontage road and stuff like that. So is there any consideration, and just lay that out as a seed to plant, that as time goes on, would be considered maybe looking at the city taking over 145? I know that's, nothing happening per se, but is there any idea that the commissioners would be interested, at least in sitting down and discussing that?
I think there's always interest, Mayor, to sit down and-
Especially if, and for us as a small city to do that, we know we have to take in the cost of the maintenance and everything else in regards to that road. So it's not something we offer lightly, because we know that there would be, you know, a cost to the city. But it also gives us then a little more autonomy in what we can do with that property for the benefit of the people we serve in our city.
Right. I want you to know that the board is supportive of businesses growing, residential areas growing.
I'm not taking this at all as anything other than a nice conversation with people we work with.
And I appreciate, Tim, your apology for not getting the remarks to them in a, in a timely manner, so that their planning and zoning is kind of caught off guard on this one. I know you guys are the messengers here.
Oh, yep.
And so I appreciate that, it's a job that we all are saddled with periodically.
Periodically.
That makes us sort of the whipping boys of the issue that's at hand, so, but please don't take that personally, we understand, and so I think to Tim's point, we need to backtrack and get this correct, and whatever we can do to work with that, with that individual, or to Tim Bray's, or, excuse me, Tim Hool's point, working with you guys for whatever the future development is of Jenkins, and I think that's coming, so I applaud you folks on that.
Yep.
To think in terms of the future.
Okay.
So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Coring.
Just to re, just to recap, so we're, we are not granting the permit onto 145, correct?
Correct, that's correct.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, that's understood.
All right.
And thank you for taking the time, and there is no hard feelings here at all, that I know of, from, from us.
Appreciate it.
Yep, it gives us, it gives us marching orders to go back now, and go back and say, how are we gonna rewrite that?
Tim, did you have something else?
I do, how, how soon would you like to meet about a turnback?
I think he's interested.
Because, because the last thing, it was the last thing in my, it was the last thing on my notes, to throw out there, but it's gonna have to come back to council, and we'll have to sit down and see.
Well, there is, there is time, there is some statutory times that we would have to take a look at. So certainly, if, if it was be, it was eventually your road, this would be an issue for you to wrestle with. So we have, you know, as everybody, as everybody knows, we really have been trying to get these roads in the appropriate authority, and over the course of time that I've been here, we've turned over a number of roads that really make sense. Not very often do we have somebody come willingly forward.
Well, it has become the will of our council.
Yeah.
You know, and that's, that's, you know, that takes, you know, we have to count to three.
Right. The good thing is, is we just reconstructed it.
Yep, yep.
And the, or the 371 work actually rebuilt the other portion on the south side towards 16. So it's not, yes, there's a long-term liability, but it, it will be several years in the, in the future if you choose to take care of it, and that's something we can negotiate.
And Chair, if we were able to come down here and have you all of a sudden grant us that access, then that would make us look and say, well, then I guess we don't have to worry about taking over a road and looking at maintenance, but seeing how that pretty much sets maybe that conversation that we should have sooner than later.
Yeah, absolutely.
If that, if that, did I hit that okay?
I'll have Rob reach out.
Mr. Chair, if I can too, I really support Jenkins in wanting to develop the commercial area, but when you look at the maps, and especially the property to the east of 145 that is platted, it would sure have been helpful if, if the gentleman that wanted to develop to the west of 145 had that plotted out, so you saw the plan, and where the road construction was, and how he was gonna block those lots off. Because, you know, again, just using this one is just, you know, more convenient for what he wants to do.
Grant.
And just one other thing, even if you do, I still, safety should still be, regardless of who is the owner of the road, I think you should still give that consideration-
Absolutely.
-to what you're doing to that thoroughfare, which is the highest volume.
Potential for a lot more made-for-accesses law.
If we would have, if we would, one of the things, and I'm sorry if I can take this time, Chair, would have been to look at maybe, in our case, if it would have been allowed to make it an exit only, you know, make it only a one-way for him to only be able to come out on that road, or, you know, come out on 145 to go to the light, you know, that would have been the only way I would consider that. You know, if it were to come in front of the council, but this all came to planning commission, and we have a pretty good planning commission who recommended it, so.
Okay, I'm not gonna address that.
I didn't think you would. I just thought it through it out there.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for hearing us, appreciate your time.
All right, Tim, you are up for our last item today, for the County Road 145 Commercial Development Pro, oops, that's the wrong one, Cross Lake Federal Land Access Program.
That's a multiple.
I have a handout, too, and I was gonna just provide the map and talk about it, but I'll provide you with some other information that you can bring back, maybe just a little bit, and I'll get to it in a, I think that the next county board meeting, I'm gonna ask you to consider resolutions of support for this grant that we are planning to apply for.
I liked our acronym, FLAP.
Yeah, Federal Land Access. Actually changed the, excuse me, I changed the name actually this, this morning, I'm calling it the Cross Lake Campground and Recreational Area Access Improvement. It's, it's just a bland words, it's just not a bland words, but just changed the name to make it sound better. I learned a factoid, actually, and Chelsea, you might appreciate this, I was using the term cross lake, one word, cross lake, and cross, and the lake called cross lake is apparently two words. I never knew that, did you know that? You lived, you grew up there. I was corrected by somebody from the Corps of Engineers, and rightfully so.
There used to be a sign on one side of the city that had it as one word, and the other side of the city had it as two. They finally fixed that.
So, so the, on the, you'll see at the top of the thing that I handed out, it's two words, so, because the Cross Lake Recreation Area is the Corps of Engineer Campground and Recreational Area, it's on the lake of Cross Lake, so.
But not a typo with a speech.
It is not a typo, but I, I look at those signs a lot differently now, but, I have another handout, too, sorry. I want to just start by talking about the, what the Federal Land Access Grant Program is, it's offered every two years, in my experience, yes.
If I can stop you just for a second, you'll provide this handout and the other one also to Commissioner Coring electronically?
Yes, I will, I do have an electronic version.
I can send it right now.
Okay.
Cool.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna do another handout, I'm sorry.
It was a little bit of a hot time engineering this morning, I was just literally gonna show the map, but then I thought, you know, I have a few minutes, I thought I'd put together just a quick outline for all of us, as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
So the Federal Land Access Grant Program is designed, just like the name suggests, to provide access to federal lands. And it can only provide revenue or funding to improve access. And so this is a fairly unique opportunity in Crow Wing County, there's not a lot of other federal property that exists out there where this grant money could be applied to. And so we've been talking with the city of Cross Lake for many years, they've done a lot of public outreach and some listening sessions with their residents over the years, and this roundabout at the intersection of Cassaw 3 and Cassaw 66 in Cross Lake, right outside the front gate of the Corps of Engineers Campground and Recreational Area, has been coming up for a number of years. But like many other intersection improvements that are requested in areas that aren't really seeing high volumes of crash data, it just hasn't risen to the top. The ones that are rising, there's a couple ways to get to the top, crashes, of course, and then outside money. So if you think, if you're familiar with Grandview Lodge, they recently were awarded some state bonding money for one of these types of intersections, that it was interest for a roundabout there, but there was just, it was not high enough on our priority list at Crow Wing County to put some of our limited funding towards it. And it really needed that outside source to get it to the top. I think we all agreed that it was a good idea, but just not our top priority. And so we're trying to apply that same premise here, is if we can bring outside money, we, the city of Cross Lake and, and Crow Wing County, and even the campground is really excited to do some, some modifications there, if we can bring that money, it can raise it to the top of our priority list to, to build this thing that the community's been talking about for many years. So the, the Federal Land Access Program is $4.5 million available statewide, this is a competitive process, and like Gary said earlier, and I think others had mentioned, it is a competitive process, there is no guarantee ever about grant dollars. And so if we don't get the money in this, it will, it'll fall back in place on the priorities that's down there pretty far. So this intersection improvement. It's intended to address existing conditions, there, as you all know probably, that there are seasonal, very high seasonal peak traffics in Cross Lake. Right now, it may not be that busy, there are certain times it's still busy in the winter. But it's also to address the future traffic increases that we're all anticipating for the installation of the National Loon Center. So this is a facility similar to the Wolf Center and the Eagle Center and those kind of things around Minnesota that are large tourist attractions. There's expected to, this particular attraction, which is supposed to be built in 2024, they're still going through some funding processes, is expected to generate tens of thousands of more visitors to Cross Lake every year. And with that, you're gonna come increase pedestrian demand, vehicle demand, and this intersection that's already kind of struggling in terms of congestion, not crashes thankfully, will continue to cause us problems. And so it is in an effort to head that off and to address problems that are right now. And that's prob, that's probably why the community's been talking about it for so long, and in their visioning sessions over the last few years. So the preliminary estimate so far, and we're very high level right now, this is a concept drawing, if you go back to the drawing, Therese, is $1.2 million, that's all-in, that's engineering, any right-of-way that we might need, public outreach, and the construction, of course. This type of grant requires a 20% local match, and that will be part of the resolution that I would present to you next Tuesday, if, if you allow me to after this presentation. The total request from the FLAP, or the Federal Land Access Program, would be, after the 20%, would be just short of $1 million, $950,000 is what we're anticipating, we're still kind of sharpening our pencil on, on the estimate. And the application deadline is about a month away, in December 15th. And part of that, we have an application to fill out, we have some paragraphs where I have to explain the need and those types of things, show this graphic, and then also letters of support to provide the local match and some of those other things. One of the biggest requirements is that the Corps of Engineers, the actual federal property, the owner-manager that must sign off. And so we've already had a meeting with Corinne Hodapp, she is the, I wanna say the manager or the lead of the Cross Lake Recreational Campground, she also does some work with the Gull Lake Dam and Recreational Area there, too. We've met with her, and she has some preliminary support for it, she was checking to see if she had the authority to sign it and endorse it, or it had to go up to the Colonel or the district, the Corps of Engineers, so we're working that angle. We also have some preliminary support from the city of Cross Lake, they have yet to pass anything officially with their council. We did meet with the mayor, who showed some indication of support, but recognizing that he had the rest of the council to work with, too. We don't feel, at this point, I don't feel that the city of Cross Lake will be a funding partner, because this is the intersection of two county roads and the Corps of Engineer Campground. We are initiating, and I think the county, and I'm thinking that the city of Cross Lake will have very limited cost participation, so it might not, any letter of support or support that they give would not necessarily- that they give would not necessarily be committing to any funding, but other than just supporting the concept of this type of intersection in their city. We already talked about the roundabout concept I'd been advised during past community visioning sessions. This was the Minnesota Design Team, and there's another study, it's called Blue Zone Study, that a lot of the local people that are involved in the community have initiated to outside resources to come in to help the city plan and identify what they want their city to look like in the future. The next bullet point I have is, it could be combined with the Transportation Alternatives Grant, if this money is awarded, or the other one's awarded. So we really have two particular grants going on potentially in this area. The Transportation Alternatives Grant is also a federal grant, but it's from a different source. It's from the Federal Highway Administration. And we have been applying, this will be our third year applying, and you already endorsed the project to be the fiscal agent as well as the 20% match on some pedestrian accommodations in this same vicinity. So I didn't bring that graphic, but sidewalks and trails from here all the way up to the ice cream shop a little bit farther north. And so that one, we're in the third year of that. We've been, we actually awarded money the first year, but it was not enough. So we turned it back in. The second year, we just missed out by one point, I think. And this year, knock on wood, we're going to get that grant. And that grant is also predicated, or the reason why we're doing it is because of the Loon Center. We feel that that increased pedestrian traffic and the prohibition, I guess, on parking for those resident, those patrons of the Loon Center, not being allowed to expand this parking, will cause people to walk from Cross Lake. And so we need to make sure we have that pedestrian system that's continuous and safe in that area. So if both grants are awarded, to be both federal money, we'd combine them and work together to make it into one project. And then for this one, right now, I believe, we would focus on 2024 construction and move up and work to move up the other pedestrian work to do it. So over the, so next Tuesday, I'd like to come before the board and ask for a resolution of support, so I can make it by the deadline for December 15. And it will, in a nutshell, I haven't completely finished it yet, it's committing to the local match of 20% and that it would be the lead, take the lead on it, in a nutshell. So the more specific language will be in your packet by the end of this week.
So the application has to be in on December 15?
Correct.
Is there an award date?
I'm not aware of the award date. I'm hoping that actually we'll know before we get the other one back. I assume the springtime of next year. It doesn't say in the correspondence. I did leave, I did provide you with some frequently asked questions for the federal access grant. It really.
I didn't see it in there.
I have not seen it either.
And is this one that you can apply year after year? If you don't get it the first year, you can try the next year?
Yes. In my experience, it's every two years. So when we first tried to apply for the pedestrian facilities I just talked about, we thought this was the way to go. But we just couldn't meet that short timeline. We weren't ready yet. And it had not been, it was not offered last year, and now it's offered again this year. And it's not because of, in my experience, it's not because of COVID, it's because it's just every two years.
So if we aren't awarded this time, then construction would probably be 26 if we were to be successful in the next round?
Possibly. It's hard to tell. We would continue to put in for it if you or the board at the time, and the city of Cross Lake and the campground manager support it.
Good. Mr. Chair, what's the timeline, Tim, for the Loon Center?
My understanding, that's a great question. My understanding is that they have, they're still doing some fundraising for the building. I know that there's some interpretive kiosks, some docks and those things that were part of the plan going in, I think, now even. But they have to raise some public funds or some private funds to match with the legislature given them for the building, and they're still working on that. My understanding is that they, I believe a year ago, recently, a year ago, hired an executive director for the National Loon Center Foundation. It was, and this is a professional, full-time, as I understand it, that's helped working on that fundraising. So the last I heard, I talked to one of the Loon Center Foundation members just recently, it was still on track for 2024. So.
Well, personally, I think if we can attract outside dollars, we ought to go for it. That, you know, 20% isn't debilitating for us, but.
No.
But I think that we should attempt to go after these dollars. Other commissioners?
I'd agree.
I'll mention one more thing, just that this is a nice drawing. I mean, you know, our staff does a great job putting together these. But this is a concept. This, and there are some people that will look at this, particularly business owners, that will be concerned about what we see here. What I mentioned on the onset was that this grant would include engineering. And so we have a lot of stuff to figure out. So some of those dollars that would come with this grant would fund a study, which include public outreach, more detailed design to try to minimize some of the impacts that might come with this. It might even move the roundabout around. It might be bigger, it might be smaller. So I just want to point that out, that we're doing enough to give the people that will evaluate this enough information to say, this is a good concept, this is good for the federal property, it's going to improve safety, let's give them the money. Once we get the money, we're going to get to work, hard work, and it may just look a little different than this.
I know the concern will be Andy's and that parking lot in front of them and those businesses in that row probably have the biggest concern.
It could be, you know, this line right here is the federal, this is all federal property.
Wow.
And so that Andy's parking lot is on federal property. Now that, I mean, there is some coordination between the businesses and that. They don't, you know, so it will be a challenge to kind of figure out all that. And that's why we need to do the engineering study and that community outreach piece, so.
Commissioner Coring, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Yes, I guess, just a comment. You know, I will say that I am so proud to be on Crow Wing County's Board of Commissioners, because, you know, I've been in government for a lot of years now, and I feel like government is not futuristic. It doesn't, government doesn't look very far to the future. And when I see this drawing, and I, you know, and obviously, we know Cross Lake is going to, our area is going to continue to grow into the future. And, you know, whether this project is, you know, in a year or two or even in eight years, I think that we as a county board, our county engineer, we're looking forward to say, you know, what should it look like in the future? And so I, I don't know, I'm really impressed with this today. I mean, it'd be easy for us to just sit around and say, well, that's the way we've done it for 30 years, might as well not change anything. You know, this is being futuristic. I mean, I feel like Michael J. Fox.
Thank you, Commissioner Coring. Always bring a smile to our faces. All right, Tim, I think you have the support. I think we'd be happy to sign that letter of support on this, or whatever document you need from us.
Sure. It'd be a resolution of support.
Okay.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anything else?
Anything else for us?
Anything for the staff?
Thank you very much.
I guess that's the end of our meeting. Everyone have a great day.